All right, so we are on to the video with all of the extra bits and pieces and bubbles. So most of this is going to be 2019 exam stuff, but not all of it. Sorry for the background, my dog gets treats whenever I talk to my laptop. So the, so 2019 questions are definitely everything the main thing to be answering, but I'm going to still do those last. So the first thing I have instead is the kinetic molecular theory of gases, word problems with Boyle's law and a general thing on calculations. So as far as kinetic molecular theory goes, there are four main points to kinetic molecular theory. So it looks like this. So they are in a brief summary that gas particles are tiny. They are so tiny, in fact, that we assume that the volume of an indigent visual gas particle is negligible. So tiny. So that's what this first one basically boils down to. The second thing. Tiny. This other one, gas molecules are constantly in random note motion, moving in straight paths, colliding with walls of their container with one another and perfectly elastic collisions. These three words at the end are actually the most important part of this. So we can say constant motion, but realize that if I had a ball and I just dropped the ball onto the ground, the ball might bounce and it might bounce again and it might bounce again, but at some point that ball just rests on the ground. And so this is, this is a regular, a regular ball. The thing is, is that gases don't do that. Not gases. Gases will just keep going. We never worry that all the action in the room is going to settle to the floor because it doesn't. So constant motion, gas particles are in constant motion. Gas particles exert no attractive or pulses forces on, on one another. So this basically says that gases don't have any intermolecular forces. So no intermolecular forces on gases, there simply are none, zero, zip. And this also frankly relates to the previous one. Because if they did feel those forces either for the walls of their container or for one another, they would slow down and you would have issues with that elasticity. So gas particles do in fact keep going and part of that is assuming that they have no forces. Last one is the average kinetic energy of the particles is proportional to the temperature. So kinetic energy is proportional to the temperature. What this is going to mean for us is that we can talk about the kinetic energy and basically as our temperature increases, our kinetic energy will also increase. So these two things will go together. So as a matter of fact, if you have a whole bunch of different gases, like say nitrogen and helium and I don't know methane. And they're all at like 500 Kelvin, then all of these would have the same kinetic energy. Now they wouldn't necessarily all have the same speed, they wouldn't all necessarily go the same rate, they wouldn't have the same rate of effusion, that's different. So speed depends on mass and energy. So for us, this is one of those things where given the same energy lighter molecules have a faster speed. So that is the kinetic molecular theory. So four main points. The last one is the one that usually takes the longest to explain and to describe, but all four of these things are part of the kinetic molecular theory of gases. And this also winds up going into how we're going to define ideal gas. Now, one of the other questions was specifically about Boyle's law, or I think just gas questions in general. So a lot of times what we're going to wind up with is a question that says something like a gas in a balloon. You're going to see balloons a lot as we describe, let me make this bigger so you guys can actually read that. You're going to, you're going to see us describe balloons a lot. The reason why we often use balloons is because the volume can change. So we assume that you all have seen balloons at some point and have experienced the fact that those are fairly elastic containers and those volumes change, they change really beautifully. So it's, it's much easier for us to describe a change in volume and say, hey, it's in a balloon. Sometimes we may also say things like an elastic container is another way of saying that. But all of these are just ways for us to say, hey, the container can change shape. A gas in a balloon has has an initial volume of 3.4 liters at one atmosphere, 1.0 atmosphere of pressure. If that balloon is taken into an airplane where the pressure drops to 0.72 atmospheres, what is the new volume of the balloon? So a lot of times you're going to see word problems that involve gases. So one of the things to kind of keep track of is what do you have? So as we go through here, this tells me I have an initial volume. So I've got a volume of 3.4 liters and it also gave me a pressure at that same volume of one atmosphere. This question was actually really nice to me because it told me that this is pressure. Technically, we don't have to tell you that atmosphere is pressure. We can actually expect you to know that atmosphere is a unit of pressure. So that was a nice thing that they did. And essentially this really small word at is what tells me that these two numbers go together. So the word at in between tells me that the 3.4 liters and the one atmosphere are happening together. They're happening in the same instance, they're happening in the same condition. If that balloon is taken into an airplane where the pressure drops, so this is my change. So this is, this is the new thing. There's my new pressure. What is the new volume of the balloon? So asking me for the new, I should have said in liters. I want, I want it to match. I want, I want the unit to match. That was my personal goal and I failed. So a lot of this is going to be, I highly recommend writing on your exam to emphasize which numbers go with which thing. One of the other things you can do to keep track is you can actually use different methods of underlining. So I did it a little bit here where I actually used a bracket in blue, but you could also use something like little hash marks under one set of conditions and you could use then something else like other one line or two lines under the other thing. So there's different ways to keep the information straight. From here, now what I need is I need an equation that has two volumes and two pressures in it. Well, I'm just going to start from this equation, PV equals NRT. I know that I can go ahead and set all of my variables equal to R and that this would be an initial set of conditions. And here would be my final set of conditions. Now I only need pressure and volume, they didn't tell me anything about number of moles, but from the description, it sounds like the balloon was probably closed off. It didn't tell me anything about temperature, so I'm going to assume that those two things are the same. So I'm just going to cancel out my moles, I'm going to cancel out my temperature. And then what I'm going to wind up with is P1 V1 is equal to P2 V2. That R I could leave in the middle, but I don't really need it. It's another thing on a different equal sign, it just makes everything more cloudy. So now I have one equation with three variables or pardon me with four variables, I have three of those numbers. So now I'm just going to plug everything in. So my pressure one is one atmosphere, my volume is 3.4 liters, my new pressure is 0.72 atmospheres and I've got a new volume and did I bring my calculator into this room with me? No. Hold on. Welcome back from fall break. All right. So 3.4 divided by 0.72 gives me my final volume of 4.72 liters. When I look back at what's happening here, since I have pressure multiplied by volume here, I actually know that pressure and volume is going to be an inverse relationship. Which means that as pressure goes down, volume should go up. I know this because they're multiplied together, they're multiplied by each other. So that I can get the same number out the other side by multiplying them together. One goes up, the other goes down. So my pressure went down, my volume went up, that looks really good. So that is my final answer. So do be aware that when we do gas law problems, you are likely to run into a whole bunch of numbers. So having a way to pull the numbers out of the problem is what you're going to need. So just take the moment to take stock of what you have. I, I know that everybody always wants to do things as quickly as possible, but part of your job is going to be to pull the numbers out of the problem, take a moment to do that. There was another request out of the chat, which was just for calculation questions in general. So I definitely understand that idea of, hey, what kind of calculation questions can we possibly do? What might they look like, what might be on the, the, the short answer question on the exam? So a couple of things. As you think about things like chapter nine, there are some calculations in here that all involve molarity. So there's things like M1, the dilution equation, in 1V1 equals M2V2. There's stoichiometry that involves molarity, there's titrations in here and there's also pH. Negative log. There's probably something else in there that I'm missing, but that's what I remember right now. Chapter 10 for calculations has using thermochemical equations, so that's the one where you've got like A goes to 2B and you have a value of delta H. And then the question becomes something like for every, if you have four moles of B produced, how much energy was required? So if I have four moles of B in my reaction, I needed two moles of B and that got me 12, we'll assume that says kilojoules. So therefore it required a grand total of 24 kilojoules to get two moles of B. So there was that thing. Then we had formulas that involved this specific heat times the mass and the change in temperature is equal to the heat or the heat capacity times the change in temperature and we could have combined those, tell you that the specific heat times the mass is equal to the heat capacity. So we had all of those. And then we also had, which I did at the review, the three ways to solve for enthalpy of reaction, which is the very last thing I did during the review. So I don't need to do that again, done it. Chapter 11, calculation wise, you're going to have PV equals NRT. So we could give you a pressure, a volume, moles and ask you to solve for temperature. Basically, there, there are four variables here, R is a constant. And so we could give you any three of those variables and ask you to solve for number four. There are similar to what I, we just did in 1T1, T2V2 into T2. There's a whole different variety of equations we can actually pull out of here. So we did it all with Boyle's law, which was pressure and volume, but we can also grab other versions of this, like we can grab one that is volume and temperature out of here, or we can also grab the one that is volume and moles and go across like that. So there's a, there's a lot of different variations and flavors that involve one scenario and a second scenario and solve. So that does happen a fair amount. Then the other thing that's in this chapter 11 is it's called stoichiometry of gases. And what that one essentially is, is if I say I have 2A as a gas going to 3B as a gas, while we've always done reactions in moles, if both of those are gases, I can actually say that this is 2 liters of A will get me 3 liters of B. So I can actually do this entire reaction in gases and do it in liters and do it in volume instead of doing it in moles. Which is weird, but we can do it because of the relationship the volume has to moles. So basically, instead of putting everything through PV equals NRT and putting it back out again, you can just be like, well, of course they're related to each other and leave everything in liters. Makes your life a lot easier. Another thing we can do, there's make sure life easier, there's a thing called STP for gases, which is 0 degrees Celsius and one atmosphere. And when that is true, one mole of gas is equal to 22.4 liters. You don't necessarily have to have this 22.4 liters memorized. You do however, have to memorize STP for gases is 0 degrees Celsius and one atmosphere. Gosh darn, I don't know if y'all remember, but in the review, I was definitely like, there's always something else I feel like I'm missing when it comes to memorization. There's one of them right there, STP for gases you are responsible for. What else is in this chapter? Oh, partial pressures. So partial pressures to me are always really interesting because on one hand, partial pressures can be relatively straightforward. And by straightforward, I mean it'll be something like you have 0.2 atmospheres of oxygen and 0.4 atmospheres of nitrogen, what's the total pressure? And all you do is add them together. That, that's it. 0.2 plus 0.4 is equal to 0.6 atmospheres and you're done. That being said, you can also do things that are a bit more complicated. And those usually involve the fact that I could take the, so I have this idea of my amount of oxygen. I could set that it was a ratio, so 0.2 atmospheres of oxygen divided by my total, 0.6 atmospheres of oxygen. Total, this is just total down here on the bottom. Similarly to how we talked about volumes being related, pressures are also related to moles. So this is actually equal to something that we refer to as mole fraction. And mole fraction then is the moles of O2 divided by the total moles. So this is one of those where I could actually use this either to find out information about the total number of moles or I can actually use it to find out information about nitrogen. Because there's only two gases set up in this particular scenario. So if I then told you, hey, there are in fact four moles of O2, I could then ask for what is just the total number of moles, total moles. Then all we're going to do is plug in for this. So we already have this information about the partial pressure of O2 and the total pressure, which we already solved for my moles of O2, they now gave us four moles of O2, I'm just going to solve for total moles. And that's, so, but this idea that you can relate partial pressures to something else is, is different, is a new thing. X is equal to 12. That was my total. And like I mentioned, because we had information that the other thing in there was nitrogen. Technically, if I wanted nitrogen, I would just subtract and say for those moles as oxygen, whatever's left over is nitrogen. There's a lot of different information I can find using partial pressures. Partial pressures is just a really fancy way of saying that I have gases in a box and some of these are nitrogens and some of these are oxygens. And so I can then describe the partial pressure of oxygen and the partial pressure of nitrogen. For those of you that have ever had to think through things like, okay, the atmosphere is about 80% nitrogen, it's about 20% oxygen. We could also do those percentages in terms of partial pressures since at sea level it's about one atmosphere, so that's about 0.8 atmospheres of nitrogen and about 0.2 atmospheres of oxygen. Obviously approximations because there's more than just nitrogen and oxygen in our atmosphere, but that's just going to give you that idea. There was one other, oh no, I have to grab it. This one. Just that really fun thing where it's like, what have I been doing? So someone did ask about calculating percent by mass. So I did oxidation reducing agents during the review. I did poly basic bases for the review, I did word problems just now. We've been talking about mathematical problems, that's all of this. Did this one already, I did this one already, okay. Percent by mass, so I guess I'll go ahead and do percent by mass. I don't know where that one's coming from because it's not something we usually ask you guys to do. But, but basically all percent by mass is, is it's the grams divided by 100 grams, so this is usually, it's usually the grams of like a solute divided by 100 grams of the total. So that's usually what percent by masses times 100. Percent. So that, that's all, that's all that one typically is, is a percent by mass. So again, I'm not entirely certain why that person was curious about percent by mass, it's not something we've covered this semester. This is a chapter 13 thing, so it'll come back when we do solutions because we'll do a lot more types of concentration units, including percent by mass, but it's not something we actually need right now, but that's what the formula looks like. So I do have office hours in person and online, if you guys are curious about that. So I'm not really certain where that question came from. Okey dokey. So now I should be into doing 2019 exam questions. So for anybody who has not gotten to do the exam yet, this is your chance to pause or stop the video while I figure out what all I want for 12, 13, 15, 18, 25. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, great. Okay, okay. Don't say. I would like this button, there you go. So I have not done any of these yet, so we'll just do it there. Okay. We have 0.67 gram sample of the unknown byproduct acid requires 25 milliliters of some sodium hydroxide to titrate it. What's the molar mass of the unknown acid? Okay, so first of all, it asked for molar mass, even it was really nice and actually gave you the units right here. So the molar mass units are in grams per mole to remind you. And the thing is, the problem actually gave you the gram, so it actually already told you that's 0.670 grams. So all I'm looking for now are moles. So moles are the missing part of the equation, the moles are the things that I don't have. So I got work to do. So I need the moles of the acid. Now, there is another piece of information that they gave me, which is that this is an unknown diprotic acid. So when we're solving for this, I don't know what it is, but this is going to have two protons in addition to that acid part that's being mixed with sodium hydroxide. So the thing that I do know, even though this is a little bit weird why I put this all together, is I'm going to, no, I'm going to need twice as much sodium hydroxide to neutralize that acid. And I know that because of the diprotic acid, it says di, that means there's two protons here. All of these sodium hydroxides only bring one hydroxide to the table, that means I'm getting twice as much so that I can neutralize my acid. So what I can now do is I can go ahead and figure out how many moles of sodium hydroxide this is. In order to do that, all I'm going to do is I'm going to use my molarity like it's an equation. So molarity is equal to moles divided by liters. So therefore, if I rearrange this and if I take my molarity and multiply it by liters, I should get the moles, that's what I'm looking for, that's what I want. 0.16 times 0.025. So I just took my molarity 0.16 times liters, which was 25 milliliters as liters, so this gets me 0.004 moles. All of that is NaOH. So now I'm going to take my NaOH and say that I need 2 moles of NaOH for every one mole of my diprotic acid. So that then gets me 0.002 moles of my diprotic acid. Moles was the number I was looking for. Now I have it and I have it of the acid. So this is not an unknown anymore, this isn't known, this is 0.2. Oh, no, no, so many zeros, don't lose the zeros. 002 moles. So 0.067, no, point, 0.67 grams divided by 0.002 gets me a grand total of 335. But that's my final answer and yay, it's the thing that's bolded. So main parts of this question are going to be catching those words like diprotic or monoprotic would be if it was one, diprotic, di is for two, triprotic, tri would be for three. So keeping track of all those prefixes and what they mean. And at this point, I personally prefer to write out the equation, other instructors may give you a different way to do this, but frankly, chapter nine is a lot about predicting products and a lot about looking at what's going on in the reaction. So I, I'm going to say that this is a skill you guys should have. What was for? I wonder what 12 is. Which of the following answers does not contain a strong electrolyte? So this is one where we have to go through and do all of the things. So so first of all, when it says strong electrolyte, there are three things that count as strong electrolytes. Strong acids, strong bases, soluble compounds, soluble ionic compounds. So first game. Strong acids. HBR, HBR is a strong acid. That's only, oh no, there's one. Perchloric acid, also a strong acid. HNO2 is not a strong acid, HNO3 is, but this is actually a weak acid. HF is also a weak acid, HClO2 also a weak acid. HPO4 also a weak acid, I know that because it's not in the strong list. H2SO3 also weak. Do notice that we did pick a lot of weak acids that sure look like strong acids, they're related, but they're not the same thing. So keeping, keeping in mind, we are mean about that, we do expect you to have those memorized. Strong bases. So FeOH3, this is not, this is not a base because it's not an alkali metal. And it's not one of the other strong ones. This one is though, KOH, there's a strong acid, it's a strong base, that's one strong base. That's the only thing other on here that's a base. Everything else is going to be dealing with if it's soluble or not. So gosh, the rest. Um, everything else is gonna be dealing with if it's soluble or not, so gosh, the rest, oh, the rest of these um are, so these are weak, but I'm gonna put a line through them just to show that we've talked about them already. Everything else on here is a solubility question. Now granted, um. Is there anything that completely gotten rid of? Yes, so does not contain a strong electrolyte, so I already know, so I have HBR in D, that it's not D. And since I found KOH in C, it's not C. And since I found HClO4 in B, it's not B, so I only have to look really analyze four compounds left. Um. Lead iodide, uh, that one is a solid, um. That's one of those exceptions. Um, do I have, no, that's connected molecular theory, um. So this one is one of the exceptions of most of the halogens are usually soluble, but lead is one of the exceptions that makes it insoluble. Um, for that matter, this silver chloride down here actually has um that same story where chloride is usually soluble, but silver makes it insoluble. Uh, FeOH3, uh, lead or iron three hydroxide is also gonna be a solid, the only things that are that have hydroxide in them that are soluble are your strong bases. If it has hydroxide, it's not, and it's not a strong base that is insoluble. So the only thing that is left then to consider is the cesium sulfide, but cesium is always soluble, cesium's an alkaline metal. Alkaline metals are always soluble, so this is actually a strong electrolyte, so don't forget to have your periodic table next to you as you're doing these, so that you can double check and be like, oh, look at that cesium, cesium's over in that first column, alkaline metal, so don't forget. Alkaline metals important. But that was a lot of analysis. Phew. Just to get to A. So that, that was a lot. That was a lot. Don't blame you, oh, which, what are we doing next? Uh, so that was twelve, oops. I just wanted to checkbox it, twelve, uh, thirteen, is fourteen next, no. Uh, thirteen. So we can go ahead and do thirteen since somebody asked for it, and there comes that time where I think guys will feel a little better, but uh, this is the thing that I was trying to tell you is not on the exam. So this, this is gravitational metric analysis, this is the thing I was trying to explain, it's not covered on the exam. But it's got a lot of good stuff in it, um, so why not? So this has ah, we're gonna need a balanced chemical equation, more than likely, uh, so this is calcium nitrate. CaN032, nitrate is in the always soluble category. Um, two potassium phosphate. Potassium's also an always soluble thing because it's in that alkaline metal group, how many grams of calcium phosphate, calcium phosphate will form, I'm gonna go and finish the balancing just because it'll make me feel better. Uh, but three, I'm gonna need three calciums, I'm gonna need two phosphates to make this all work, so that can all just be one, and this will be a six. Uh, my calcium phosphate here is gonna be a solid, uh, it actually even told me how many grams of calcium phosphate, that's, that's gonna be my solid. So. What we're gonna do is uh, I have information about calcium nitrates. So I'm told that it's point zero two five zero liters and zero point one zero eight molar. I have information about potassium phosphate, uh, I'm told that it's zero point zero three zero zero liters, and it's zero point one two zero molar. Um, so now what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get both of those into moles, so I'm just gonna multiply those two numbers together to get moles, point one eight times point oh two five. So this is zero point zero zero four five moles. And then point zero three times point one two zero point zero zero three six moles. Um, then this is still a limiting reactant question, because the question is how much of a product do you make, and we have information about both reactants. So I do need to go ahead and take my zero point zero zero four five moles of my calcium nitrate, and all I'm gonna do is I'm gonna do my old game where I say that I have three moles of calcium nitrate in one reaction, all I'm really doing is dividing by the stoichiometric coefficient, taking point zero zero four five, dividing it by three. Get zero point zero zero one five. And then doing the same thing with the other one, zero point zero zero three six moles of potassium phosphate. And there's two moles of potassium phosphate two right there. Um, in one reaction. So point zero zero three six divided by two gives me eighteen. So my smaller number is limiting reactants, my smaller number is points uh zero zero one five, which is the calcium nitrate. So calcium nitrate is my limiting reactant. Um, so this is the number of moles of reaction I would get. And for every one mole of reaction, I in fact do have one calcium phosphate. So that actually is zero point zero zero one five moles of calcium phosphate. I got moles of the answer, what, what did it want? What, what did it want, grams? What, it gave me molar mass now. So I get to take my point zero zero one five and multiply it by three hundred ten point one eight. So after I take that and I multiply it by three ten point one eight, I get a final answer of zero point four six five two seven grams. How to do? Yay, that's the right answer. Alright. Ah, great. Okay, okay. But yeah, like I mentioned, because limiting reactant problem, we actually took gravitational metric analysis off of the twenty twenty-two exam, but I know people still learn more stoichiometry stuff, so there was more stoichiometry stuff. Fifteen. Oh, the Hess's law one, um. Sorry, that sounded my voice, um. So for those of you that haven't tried this on your own yet, please, please pause the video and try this one out before you watch me do it. Um. So I, I completely understand for those people that like to see as many examples as possible, or if you are stuck getting help, but Hess's law questions are the question that more people ask me to give them examples of. And these take the most time to make from scratch. So if you have not tried this one out on your own, you need to try this one out on your own, because this is the hardest one to make you a new one of. Um. It just, it just takes more effort, it just does. Okey dokey. So use the following reactions to determine entropy for this, so this down here is the goal. Those two equations up there, what we have to work with. Since I have whole reactions, because I have whole reactions, this is Hess's law. So I know that because I got arrows. I have, I have a whole reactions to work with. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start from left to right, uh, here is uh C2H2O11, that is sucrose. And I'm looking for that same thing, oh, there it is, there's my sucrose. Um, so I need that to be on left-hand side, it's not, although I do only need one of them, and there's one of them. So I am just going to copy this down, but I'm gonna put all of the reactants on the product side, I'm gonna put all the products on the reactant side, but otherwise, I am in fact copying this down. Two C6H12O6 as a solid, uh, because I did that, I reversed my reaction, so I'm gonna reverse the sign, negative fourteen point nine three. Okay. What's next? Uh, uh, oh. Yeah, um, sorry, all of those sounds were because a lot of times oxygen is everywhere, and so I was trying to do oxygen last, but oxygen is not everywhere. Um, I just have to worry about oxygen being right there. So that's all I gotta do, cool. Uh, so I need twelve oxygens in the reactant side, I have an equation that has six oxygens in the reactant side, so all I'm gonna do is take this whole entire equation and multiply everything by two. Uh, two C6H12O6 as a solid plus now twelve O2 as gas goes to twelve carbon dioxide as a gas plus twelve waters as a gas. Uh, all I do is multiply everything by two, so I'm gonna multiply that by two. I didn't flip everything, so the sign stays the same, so this is now negative five thousand six hundred. Uh, so now I hopefully have everything I need, I know we haven't even looked at the products yet, but I used both of my equations, so I'm just gonna see if what I did works. Um, alright, so as I go through here, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna add all together, I'm gonna get rid of anything I can as I go along. So I have only got one of those sucrose things, so I'm gonna copy that down. D12H22O11 as a solid. And then here is a water. But there is water. So I'm gonna get rid of this one, and instead of twelve, I'm gonna say that I have eleven. Uh, it's on the product side, so I'm gonna write it down later. Because I'm still doing all my reactants, uh, but that takes care of both of my reactants in the blue equation, so now we've gone to the red equation. Uh, I've got two C6H12O6, but there's two of those on the products in blue. So these two things go away. Then there's nothing to get rid of my oxygen, so I just copy my oxygens down, because those only existed in one place. Now, so I did all my reactants, so now it's product time, I'm not, I don't have any products left in the blue stuff. Products in the red stuff, that's twelve CO2s as a gas plus eleven waters as a gas, and now we're just gonna double check, because the things I wanted in the first place, uh, I definitely have those, so there's one reactant, one reactant, twelve oxygens, still have twelve oxygens, the things I hadn't gotten to yet, uh, now I have twelve carbon dioxide, and there they are. And I wanted eleven waters, uh, and I have eleven waters, isn't that lovely? So all I'm gonna do, I added those all together, so I'm just gonna add these together, so this is negative five thousand six hundred fourteen point ninety-three. Um, so likely we're gonna have to round that, I assume. Um, okay, no decimal places, so this is negative five thousand six hundred fifteen. Right there. Boom. So yeah, so Hess's law, take a deep breath. Personally, I recommend from left to right. But that's because I grew up in the United States, and we do from left to right really often. So that is my personal comfort zone, left to right. Fifteen, done, ah, why is that there, fifteen, done. Eighteen, what is eighteen? And yes, for those of you who noticed, yes, I am somewhat cheating, and I am grabbing the information off of the key. Um, that honestly just saves me a little bit of time. Because since I'm grabbing the question, and then by the time I have a solution for it, I've usually scrolled way, way away from the question, um, I feel bad. Alright, um. Oh, there's a molar mass question, uh, zero point five eight two grams, uh, gas was collected in a point two one five liter container at point nine nine two atmospheres and a temp- and three hundred seventy-three Kelvin. Uh, so this is actually a good example where they don't actually tell you what unit everything is in, but it asks, what is the molar mass of a gas? And even though this one doesn't give me units, uh, there's units in all of the answer choices. So molar mass is supposed to be equal to grams divided by moles. The question already gave me grams, so I already have zero point five eight two grams before anything else gets started, and now what I need is I need moles. Now, this is a question where it actually didn't tell you what all these things are. Uh, but this is liters, which means this is a volume. Uh, and this is atmospheres, that's a pressure, this is Kelvin, that's a temperature. Uh, and it told me that this is gas. So we are in fact on the lookout for PV equals NRT. Uh, what we are gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and go back to that old exam, because we're gonna go ahead and scroll back to that potentially useful information page. Uh, and find that they actually did go ahead and give me the gas constant. So I'm gonna use the gas constant. Uh, but when they gave me the gas constant, they gave me two of them. What? Um. They gave me two gas constants, uh, I don't need the one that involves joules, one of these has joules in it, uh, I don't want it. I don't, I don't want the one with joules. Um, because there are no joules in this problem, nothing asked me about joules, nothing's given to me in joules, can't use them, don't want them. I want liters and atmospheres and moles and Kelvin, that's what I want, I want that one. Uh, so making the units match is the game. So uh, this gave me atmospheres, and I have atmospheres, it gave me liters, and there is liters. Um, should highlight those, so you guys can see what I'm talking about, so these are atmospheres, and those are atmospheres, and it gave me liters, and those are liters. Uh, and it gave me Kelvin, uh, and that is Kelvin. And I said I wanted moles, uh, but that was my goal, uh, and there, there'd be moles. So this is looking pretty good. So put numbers in, zero point nine nine two atmospheres times the volume, zero point two one five liters is equal to in times the gas constant that I took from the back page of the exam. This is technically in liters, atmospheres, moles, Kelvin. Uh, what am I missing, T, temperature? Three seventy-three point one five Kelvin. That to me is, I, I know that there's a lot of variables happening, so it can be easy to lose your way. Uh, but that is also why I like to grab the gas constant, because the gas constant tells you what units you were looking for. Uh, so I don't have to play games, and I don't have to guess. Uh, all I have to do is look at the back page of the exam and get my number so that I can figure out what units I have to have. We already asked you guys to memorize a lot of things. Moles, there's moles. So I solved for something, what the question what, molar mass, question wanted molar mass. So I found the moles, I had the grams, so all I need to do now is go ahead and put these things together, so zero point five eight two grams, that's out of the problem, it's the second thing it told us, aside from an article, uh, divided by number of moles, zero point zero zero six nine six five moles. Uh, I get something like eighty-three point five six grams per mole. Uh, which rounds, sorry, only three decimal places, uh, are only three digits, eighty-three point six grams per mole. Right there. Remind my list, that was eighteen, oh, last one, twenty-five, okay, cool. This is all about definitions. Twenty-five is all about definitions. So this asks for the entropy of formation reaction for CHCL3. So what we're actually gonna do, so we want So what we're actually going to do, so we want the NPLP of formation reaction. Uh, I know that the answer is up there, but we're not going to look at those for right now. I want the NPLP of formation reaction um, for CHCL3. I can actually come up with most of this on my own. Uh, without looking at any of the answer choices, and that might actually be the easiest way to do this problem. Because the more you stare at those answer choices, the more tempting some of them look. So when it says formation, this little F right here means certain specific things. It means that you are forming one mole of the product. So whatever that thing is, you have to make one mole of this. You have to by definition. I don't care how ugly some of these fractions are going to be on the reactant side. By definition, you have to make one mole of it and it's the only thing you get to do. Then you're going to make that from the elements. So there's carbon, hydrogen and chlorine. Those are the elements. In their standard states. Their most common forms. Carbon is graphite. You guys have it in your pencil leads? The only other option really is diamond and I realize that diamonds is perhaps not as rare as we would have believed a hundred years ago. But it's still more expensive than pencil lead, so just roll with it. Graphite is the common form. You can dig it out of the ground relatively easily. Diamond's the one that required lots of pressure. So carbon is graphite is maybe its most common form. Then we're going to worry about balancing it last. Hydrogen is one of those diatomics. So when we talk about Brinkelhoff, um, there are seven diatomic elements that you should at least know come in all of these pairs. So hydrogen is one of them. Chlorine is another one. Now we'll get to state symbols last, but I'll show you something with state symbols. Uh, so then this needs to be balanced. Since I have to have one mole of this, that's one carbon. So there should just be a one there. So that's fine. I need one hydrogen. I have two. This has to be a half. Ew. That's what we gotta do. And then I need three chlorines. But I have two. It's like that. And you can do this algebraically, right? So I need three chlorines, but I have two chlorines. So in order to make this work, I need three halves. Whoopsies. Three apps. So you, you can solve for that algebraically. To, to make all of that work. So. Now I have not actually addressed any of the state symbols. That's because what I want to show you is I shouldn't actually need them. When I scroll up, what I want you to actually notice is we didn't test you on the state symbols. And this is actually one of the things that we do because while many of you may remember that hydrogen is a gas at room temperature, chlorine is also a gas at room temperature. Those things are things that we kind of would like you to know, but again, there's a lot of stuff for you to have memorized on this exam. So we don't actually test you on that. It would be nice if you knew it. But you can actually answer this question without that. Uh, and we do that on purpose. Um, so that, that is not your imagination, that is not unique to this question. Um, as part of how I could do this, uh, so I don't know if you guys caught it. I, I did not practice these questions before, uh, doing them on the recording because I, I don't have that much time. Um. But this is just part of the way that we write exam questions, uh, is that sure, the state symbols do matter. But we're the, I think the only trick we've ever thrown in one of these is aqueous. Um, because aqueous is never, uh, I'll write that down. Uh, aqueous is never the standard state. So I think that's the only one that the teaching team would feel comfortable putting in as a distractor answer is aqueous. Everything else they're, they're going to be the same. Aqueous is the only one we'd be like, eh, aqueous is weird. Not the standard state. None of these are standard state dissolved. Uh, but otherwise I want carbon is graphite and only one of them. Uh, so basically the first thing to do is to check and see if there's this one mole back here at the end. Um, so this one is some sort of like combustion thing. That's not it. Um, then this has a two right here, so that's not it. Um. Then this one over here is not balanced, so E is not balanced, so it's not correct. Uh, and that leaves me D and C. So this is the part where we have to be a little familiar with fractions to know how many we want. Uh, so the fact that we only want one hydrogen instead of three, so we got to make sure that we can do our, a little bit of fraction math right there. So D becomes the correct answer. And also matches the one that we came up with. Okay. So that took about an hour. But that I believe gets through all of the extra questions. So good class, study, look at the end of chapter questions. Good luck, everybody.